Call to order the regular meeting at the Terre Haute City Council, 6:00 PM Thursday, April 11th, 2024, 6:00 PM. I'd like to announce that Councilman Curtis DeBon is not with us tonight. He had a family emergency. He notified me earlier today that he would not be here, so we all have Curtis in our thoughts. First on the agenda, we have a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led tonight by William Shagley. He's a member of Scout Troop 30, and so we'd like to welcome Scout Troop 30 with their scoutmaster, Andrew Conner. So, at this time, Pledge of Allegiance. Will you just step to the microphone? We'll have a moment of silence, and then I'll ask you to lead us in the pledge.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, William, and to the Scout Troop for being here. I understand you're working on your communication badge tonight, but thanks for choosing us to help you on that. Okay, Michelle, can we have a calling of the roll?
Counselperson Azar.
Here.
Counselperson Bowlin.
Here.
Counselperson Chalos.
Present.
Counselperson DeBon. Counselperson Dinkel.
Present.
Counselperson Hinton.
Present.
Counselperson Loudermilk.
Here.
Present.
Counselperson Nation.
Here.
Counselperson Thompson.
Here.
Either present or one is absent.
Thank you, Michelle. At this time, we'll have 30 minutes of time for public comment, and that will be for items that are not on the agenda tonight. We ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. Try and limit your comments to three minutes. First on the list is Donald Hyde.
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde. I live at 1411 Puffler Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. Well, I, last week, seen two things, two different things, that I've never seen before in my life, ever. And I'll be 70 here in about three and a half months, so that's saying something. I did make it because I needed to see what it was all about and also be able to inform this public, the council, my opinion. I went to the first day of the casino, and with all said, like it or not, whether I liked it or not, I could not deny that that was the most impressive place I have possibly ever seen in my life, and I've been all over this country. It was amazing. However, there is no way, and I'm a photographer, a very good one, that one picture could communicate the casino. No one picture could do it. First of all, I don't think it could be taken. But with that said, I am now going to once again, as the council, with the money coming in from this casino, and it will be much, and the money coming in from four companies that are currently being built, two of them currently being built and two more planning on being built, and will all be open within the next two years and bringing taxes into the city and the county. I want to know why the city council refuses to start putting money from the city budget, from the taxes they get from the casino, half the money they get in the bank and saving it for seven to 10 years, and then at which time they could then build a brand-new North and a brand-new South high school with all the modern technology in it, and they could also build a new West Vigo High School, which they're supposed to do anyway. But they keep looking like they want to find ways to kick it on down the road year after year after year until we ended up like the federal government did to us when I was a young man, a young, like, kid in the '70s, and they literally ordered Terre Haute either you de-discriminate the schools, or we will do it for you, and we'll run your schools. Well, when that threat hit, they decided to build a North of the North kids and a South of the South kids, so they would no longer have to worry about discrimination. There'd only be two big high schools, and it worked. I can still remember going to school the first day and smelling the paint that was still wet. It was a good school. Only problem I had with it was all the walking. So when you build this new North and South, I want it to be a two-story school. I want it to be built where North and South are now, and I want it to be built modern. So in order to build it modern, you're going to have to put a, you're going to have a wall, and there's going to have to be about a five-feet spot between the walls before you have all the interior walls. And in those spaces there, people can reroute and rerun electricity and all the communication skills. Why? Because I've got news for you. I'm old and everything else, but I'm not that stupid. We're going to have a new boom in three technologies that aren't known publicly but are known privately, and they're going to be released in the next three years. That's going to be like it was in 1980, late '70s and '80s, when they released two things that changed America forever. One is before 1980, if you wanted to see a movie, you had to go to a movie theater. There was no way about it. Nobody could afford to see them. Then they came up with the video recordings, and we could see all the movies you want. People collected them. I was one of them, too, and I'm not the only one. Everybody did.
Mr. Hyde, are you ready?
The other thing, oh, I know, I'm about done. The other thing that hit then was computers. No American in 1980, unless you were very rich or you had a job, and it was a specific job, not very many of them were around. By 1990, that wasn't the case, and that changed America. Well, we're going to have three things coming along here in the next few years that's going to do the same thing. We have to have schools that can teach the kids the new technology. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alice Quinlan.
Good evening.
You might have to pull that mic down and talk right in just so we can hear you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Alice Quinlan. I live at 4136 Keegan Road in West Terre Haute, and I'm actually here, I thought it was later in the agenda, to speak about appropriation 14 for Terra Foods.
So this comment section is for non-agenda items?
Okay, when you called me, yes, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Matt Larimer.
My topic ended up being on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Herb Rooks.
I'm Herb Rooks. I live at 1414 South 6. I had a few issues with council in the past. I still have an issue with the council. I'd like the council to reach out somehow for interaction with the community, especially about condemned properties in this city that could be rehabbed. I keep saying, "Oh, you can do this. You can do that." I've been told by one or two people, "It's up to you people to come up with a plan and contact the citizens." I offered to be on a board, to volunteer. I've had a lot of experience in the field of construction rehabilitation. I just want to know what you're doing other than condemning these homes and tearing them down. Simple as that. And you people have no idea what you're doing in that field because you haven't told me.
Thank you, Herb.
You're welcome.
Good evening, council. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Ethan Page, 2508 Cruft Street here in town, and I wanted to give you guys an update on the Terre Haute flag process, what we're doing, how that's going, and kind of how I see that enrolling in the future, because obviously that's very much going to be, you guys are going to be a very close step here in changing ordinance and getting that, you know, deciding whether that will be something for our community or not. So just to kind of keep you guys updated, what we're doing right now is, for the past five weeks, we've had it open for community submissions so that the community could bring their ideas to their table, what symbolizes Terre Haute, what's positive, what do we have going on, and we've been accepting those submissions, and those submissions get accepted up until April 14th. And then what we do is, I have a committee of about 12 to 13 people, I think it's 12, I might be slightly wrong there, and we've been meeting bi-weekly to go over these designs, and we helped design the whole process. We've been meeting for months and months to do this. So we've been going through these designs as they come in and really looking at like the Vexology Association's rules and suggestions on what makes a long-lasting flag, what's appropriate for our community, and what's, you know, what's a great sense of pride that we can have here. So what we plan on doing is taking these designs and then having, I think it will probably be five finalists. We didn't set the exact number in case we had, you know, even more wonderful designs or perhaps we had slightly less and, you know, some of the other ones didn't quite make the bucket. So, but I think it's going to be about five, and we will go through those designs and decide on those between the 15th and the 16th. And then we already have a voting system in process and paid for through a survey tool through Survey Monkey, which will be linked to the Terre Haute Flag Project website, and we'll be advertising that to the community, open for community voting on these symbols. It will be anonymous, so you won't know who the artist is, but it will show their flag design and their full description on all the symbolism and meaning behind it, and we'll be advertising that heavily to the community for them to take a look at that and to vote on what they think best encapsulates Terre Haute, and, you know, what they have the most pride in, what flag they would like to see flown over their city. And what we plan on doing from there is for me to take that final design and present it to you guys for voting, to see if you guys would be accepting of that being our new city flag. I think I may have touched on this at the last time I spoke, but if I hadn't, there's just some, there's a lot of problems with the flag that we have in place now, and I think that this will help that, and I can explain that more if you guys would like me to. But I think what my goal is to create a uniting symbol for Terre Haute, something we can have pride in, something we love and want to fly outside of our businesses and homes and everything else like that. So after that is chosen, well, actually, before that's chosen, I'm going to ask one of you councilmen or women to please ask for an amendment to the ordinance that we currently have in place. We have to get that changed in order for this to be adopted as the flag, and I'll be reaching out about that within the next week. But I would like to go ahead and get that in front of Mr. Michael Wright so that we could get that hopefully presented to you guys for May 9th for voting on that meeting there. And then I think what you guys will be able to do is, we'll send a link to those flags that are voted on so that you can see all the choices that it could possibly be narrowed down with, and then on May 5th is when the final one will be voted in by the city, and we will just let you guys know that that is the one that we will be hoping will be our new city flag. And I think all of them have a lot of great viability, and all the ones that are even on that voting system would be an excellent symbol for our city. And one of the reasons I'm asking for it to be voted in on May 9th, if we can meet that timeline, is because June 14th is National Flag Day. So what I would love to do is, for us, we have our committee and other downtown partners that would love to put on like a Terre Haute flag recognition day, to where we can raise our flag on that day, celebrate it, and be able to have those available for the community. So I've been, I've submitted a seed grant with the community foundation with the support of the mayor's offices, mayor's office, to be able to buy flags to distribute to our community at that flag festival. So that's still in the approval process. We haven't gotten the official thumbs up, but I've talked to Kelly and everything over there, and I think it looks pretty good. So that is why we would like kind of to be on that schedule in order for the National Flag Day on June 14th.
Okay.
Do you guys have any questions or something like that I could answer?
On the Survey Monkey?
Yes.
Are you able to ensure that it's actually Terre Haute residents that are voting?
There is not a way to ensure that it's Terre Haute, but this is the closest way that we've gotten around to doing that, is that there are a few verification methods that you can put on there to, in order to verify so that people don't go on there and vote like 30 or 40 times. So the best verification method that we found to be able to do that is to record IP addresses. So when you vote, the IP address gets listed that it was voted from. I believe that we can dig down and see that it's in Terre Haute in the vicinity, but it at least keeps people, it at least keeps people from voting lots of times for a certain flag or an out-of-towner coming in and trying to disrupt the process. So after you voted with an IP address, it records that device, and you're never allowed to vote from that again. So that's the best way. We've really tried to dig down deep into that to make sure that we protect that as well as we can. That's the best verification process that we've found.
Anybody else have any questions for Ethan?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for keeping us updated.
Yeah, absolutely.
Does anybody else have public comments that didn't get a chance to sign the list? Okay, at this time, I'll call public comments. Uh, Michelle, any corrections to the general of the preceding meeting?
There are none.
Communications for the mayor? Here he comes.
Good evening, Councilwoman Bowlin and members of the Terre Haute City Council. I'm here today to provide you an update on housing, condemned properties, and demolition. So a few months ago, we started the program, Vigo County Homes for the Future, funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. We just announced our last round of award winners, and you're going to sense the theme here. The first, a $45,000 ARPA investment is leading to six tiny homes on properties that were once condemned and then demolished within the city. That $45,000 investment is leading to $461,000 from the private sector to be invested into that property. Another group took 13 dilapidated homes in our community, received $97,000, and is investing from a private side 1.6 million to build these 13 homes into duplexes, apartments, and single-family homes. Another group is taking nine vacant lots and turning them into nine single-family homes. An ARPA investment of about $83,000 will lead to $2 million in private sector investment. Another project is also bringing eight single-family homes along College Street, and this is a $77,000 ARPA investment that will lead to $1.5 million in private sector investment. I'll go to the backside as the story continues. Another project is focused on multifamily homes, and this is a $71,000 investment from the city that is leading to $3.7 million in private sector investment, six new homes. And our last project is in historic Farrington Grove. It's revamping 13 Blight properties that need rehab. This is a $97,000 investment that leads to $840,000 in private sector investment. To date, this program has brought 271 new units on vacant lots or dilapidated properties in the community of Terre Haute. On January 1st, the list of condemned properties was over 200 homes long. Our revamped building inspections crew has added dozens more to that list because it's a problem in our community. The previously passed budget had 400,000 through redevelopment to demolition. A residential home on average is about 8,000 to 8,500. You do the math, that's only 50 homes. And so we have not and will not make a dent into this this year. We will take 50, 50-ish homes down, but we'll have many more added. Why do I bring this up now? Because we have these ARPA funds, we have these vacant lots, and we are building Terre Haute back better than what it was before. The next step to this equation is, as we craft the budget for 2025, we have to look at this as a priority, housing, demolition, rehabilitation, and building new on vacant lots. That's just an update when it comes to some of the many problems that we have that stem to condemned properties. And just to update, we have 2.5 million remaining in micro grants for housing and a million remaining out of that 5 million housing bucket for pre-site development. What is pre-site development? That's doing something like taking an old police station and getting it ready for a large multifamily complex. So the administration is fixated on a few goals, one of them being housing. Any questions? That's the report for ARPA and housing today.
Does anyone have any questions for the mayor? Councilman Nation?
With the houses in Farrington's Grove that you mentioned, is that fixing houses or is it building new on vacant lots?
That's rehabilitation. This company was 13 Blight and rehabilitation units.
So you're taking 13 broken houses and fixing them and making them, repairing them rather than tearing them down and rebuilding them?
Yes, and then as Councilman Nation and I have discussed and some others, you know, what we also are looking at is creating essentially a pattern book, right? And that's saying, you know, neighborhoods like Farrington Grove, College Park, and other neighborhoods in our community, what is the characteristics, what are the style of homes that you want, and reviewing our building code and building permit process to make sure that, you know, everyone wants to build, but we really don't need a pole barn in Farrington, you know? So you've got to have that conversation of what is it that we'd like to see in our community.
Thank you for working with us on the pattern book and for recognizing the need to have some design guidelines in the historic districts of the city. That's all important for new construction, and it's also important that we fix what we can. That's not a new idea, and I'm glad it's being pursued with those funds. Thanks, I yield.
Anyone else? Thank you, mayor. I'm glad that's what your administration's fixated on. All right. Michelle, any reports from city officials?
We do have a report from redevelopment.
Good afternoon. Jason Simler, Baker Telly, Indianapolis. In front of you, I handed out a report earlier before the meeting. This is a report that the Redevelopment Commission is required to file every year on Gateway regarding the allocation areas that the city has. And I knew took a few of you, so I thought I'd step back a little bit and just talk a little bit about the allocation areas to make sure you understand what those areas are and the revenue that's generated from them that the city receives. They're able to do a lot of the projects that you have historically. The city currently has five original allocation areas, and those areas are areas the city designated over time where any new taxes that are generated are collected by the Redevelopment Commission and is used to fund public infrastructure or provide incentives for community or companies throughout your community. And very similar to the annual financial report that the city is required to file on Gateway in February each year, the Redevelopment Commission is also required to file financial information on Gateway. And we've assisted the Redevelopment Commission on this for a number of years, but this year is the first year that has been required to present this to the council. So that's why I'm here tonight, is just to present to you what the Redevelopment Commission is required to file on Gateway. So I just kind of want to quickly go through the report, just the information. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. But page one, again, this is the kind of a summary of the information that's filed that the controller will submit, but one of the items that's required is just a list of the allocation areas, which you've mentioned, the city currently has originally five. On there on the right side, you can see when they were created and then also when they're anticipated to expire. Below that lists the members of the Redevelopment Commission.
Jason, I'm sorry to interrupt you so soon, but down at the bottom of the list of the allocation areas, there's the 2020 Consolidated Economic Development Area. Can you remind us which TIP districts comprise that consolidated area?
Yes, it was the central business area, the downtown area, Jadcor, and the State Road 46.
And does it also include the Central Business District expansion?
Correct.
Okay, so it's everything but Fort Harrison and Icon?
And Icon, correct.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
The next page, we put together a graph, one of the requirements is to list the amount of revenues that was received by the Redevelopment Commission each year per allocation area and the number of expenses that were expended per area, very similar, again, to your AFR that you file for the city. So we've listed that here for each area. The next page lists kind of a breakout, detailed breakout of what those expenses are in total for the Redevelopment Commission. So we've broken out to principal and interest, professional services, other dispersments, employee benefits, and infrastructure. Page four, we're also required to list the current account balances as at the end of December 2023. So here you see the various accounts that are outstanding in the various allocation funds. And we've listed Central Business District because that's how it's listed on Gateway, but as was mentioned, that Central Business District includes the downtown area, Fort Harrison, I'm not sorry, Fort Harrison, but Jadcor and the State Road 46. And then you see Jadcor, State Road 6, Icon, and Fort Harrison are down there as below as well. And that was because for those who are kind of unique to the council, even though those areas were legally combined into one area, the 2020 consolidated area, it was important for the council that time, they wanted to keep each one of those areas separately so they could monitor what expenses were being paid for what projects. So that's why we keep them separate. And then page five lists the bonds that are outstanding. We're required to list that the bonds are outstanding, what areas they're paid from. You can see the total principal and interest that's outstanding on those bonds, the amounts that were paid in 2023, and then the final maturity date. And all these bonds are payable just from the tax increment collected from those areas. A couple of them do have guarantees from the developer because the bonds were issued to provide incentive for the specific project, and if for any reason there's a shortfall, the developer would cover that shortfall. And there are a couple instances where that is occurring. But again, that's, again, to protect the city, so you don't have, aren't required to use any of the revenue sides of the tax group to make those bond payments. And then behind that, we're required to submit a complete parcel list of all the parcels in each of the TIP areas with their gross assessed value, the base, the net AV, and then the amount of increment or growth that you're capturing from each parcel. So I've just included all the parcels that are in your various allocation areas.
Did you say that, how much of this information is in Gateway now?
All of it.
Everything that's on this report?
Mm-hmm.
So an interested citizen could go and find all of this information on Gateway, and this is the first time that this has been required to be entered in Gateway, right?
No, it's been required to enter it in Gateway for a number of years. This is the first time we've been required to present this to the council.
Great, thank you for that clarification.
Would you be happy to answer any other questions?
In some ways, it would be more useful if you would come back, like, at our next meeting after we've had a chance to review it.
Yeah.
I'd be able to ask some real questions.
And then, and think about this, this is all historical. As you know, I do prepare a report for the Redevelopment Commission that goes over future projections, so that also might be more beneficial as well as looking at the, what we're anticipating to collect going forward.
When do we expect that report? When do you give that one?
We typically have given it in June or July in the past. The date hasn't been set, but it's typically in June or July, and that's because, as you know, the Redevelopment Commission, they're required each year to make that determination on how much they want to capture, so that's why we try and do that by the same time that that's required, and that's June 15.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, go ahead.
Hello, council. Hello, council. I'm going to yield back, actually, to the mayor. He's got a brief presentation recognizing April as Genocide Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Sorry, we will be brief, but a number of constituents reached out regarding the this month being Genocide Awareness Month, so we did want to prepare this for them. Whereas the city of Terre Haute, Indiana acknowledges the importance of recognizing and remembering the atrocities of genocide, and whereas the city stands in solidarity with those who have been affected by genocide, both past and present, and recognizes the significance of raising awareness about the tragic events. And whereas it is imperative to educate our community about the causes and consequences of genocide... about the causes and consequences of genocide in order to prevent such atrocities from occurring in the future. And the month of April provides an opportunity for reflection, remembrance, and action to honor the memory of the victims of genocide and work towards a more peaceful and just world. Now therefore, I, Brandon Saklin, Mayor of the City of Terre Haute, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Genocide Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, Michelle, we have any reports from Board of Public Works and Safety?
I did not receive any.
Reports from standing committees?
A report from the Committee on Governmental Affairs, Parks and Public Property. Following our previous regular council meeting, item was referred to the committee regarding the Human Relations Commission ordinance. The committee did meet, looked over some changes, and are still discussing updates to that ordinance to bring it up to current day's needs. We've had meetings with city legal, the mayor, human relations director, and we're drafting language now. It is our intent to convene once more as a committee to review the language and bring an amendment to that ordinance in June.
I'll just comment, we also did discuss at that meeting to withhold appointment to that commission until the language was changed in the ordinance. So just for public information, we still have an appointment we need to make. We wanna make sure the ordinance is, you know, amended and we're available to use it when we make that future appointment. So that notification will go out to the public again, and we'll be asking for people to apply for that position, as well as, I think, notifying people of life board in the past. So it's a fair representation of the selection. Anybody else have any questions or comments on that? Thank you. Michelle, reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Tax abatements for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
There are none.
Items on first reading?
Appropriation 14-2024, $250,000 from ARPA number 0199 to services contractual number 0199000603432010. As a reminder, appropriations 14 through 17 need a vote to take action.
Good evening, Councilman Bowlin, and members of the city council. I'm here before you today with Jim Spear, who's in charge of Terra Foods. We've all seen multiple presentations from this organization and here, asking you all to take action on the $250,000 request from the American Rescue Plan Act to address food deserts and open the doors for a long-awaited project. We've got him here. If you all have additional questions, I know we've all seen the presentation, but we did wanna bring them out in case folks had some more questions.
I think there's some people from the public that wanna make comments as well.
Yes. Okay, at this time, we're all on the floor for public comments on appropriation 14-2024.
So good evening again. My name is Alice Quinlan, 4136 Keegan Road, West Terre Haute. I assume that's okay that I'm from West Terre Haute, speaking to the Terre Haute City Council. I've been a resident here for some 35 years. And when I first moved from the East Coast, I looked for food co-ops, farmers markets, and other sources of nutritious and local food, but I did not find much. Eventually, I discovered Blooming Foods in Bloomington, and I drove there every few months for a number of years to stock up. Then Terre Haute began a farmer's market. And White Violet at St. Mary's offered community-supported agriculture. And several other sources of local farm produce became available. Great for produce, but that's not the same as a food co-op where the collective buying power of members helps each shopper. Few of us, except maybe those who have restaurants, would buy 100-pound bags of rice or potatoes, oats or beans for personal use. But in a co-op, when 50 members buy two-pound bags, or whatever amount they want to, the bulk cost savings are passed on to them, and they pay a fraction of the costs that they would in a regular for-profit grocery store. When I heard about the startup of Terra Foods, I became a charter member. The years have passed, altogether too many, I'm sorry to say, while a succession of volunteers worked to get a sustaining membership base, search suitable locations, and gave their time and energy, their blood, sweat, tears, and blueberry juice to move Terra Foods forward. When space became available in 12 Points, they stepped up, clearing out and cleaning, planning, and painting. But the plumbing and electrical work and roofing and other issues that remain are not volunteer tasks, and the costs involved have brought progress to a halt. I believe that 12 Points needs Terra Foods to support the viability of other small businesses there in 12 Points. 12 Point residents need a source of healthy food in their neighborhood, one that they could walk to. Right now, they're in a food desert. I need Terra Foods because the products I can get online are expensive, shipping adds to the cost, and buying them doesn't do anything to help the local economy or other shoppers as a co-op would. Terre Haute needs a successful Terra Foods co-op, which will help draw in customers from the surrounding communities and from Vigo County. It's time to make Terra Foods a reality, time to invest in this cooperative enterprise. I urge all of you to support appropriations 14. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Karen Long, 1904 North Ninth Street. I am a Terra Foods member, as Annie is. I'm not a charter member, I'm number 812. It took me a while. I'm also a member of the 12 Point Providibilization Initiative. I'm the treasurer. And as we know, 12 Point's neighborhood is a very densely populated area. It's also a food desert. Not every resident there has easy access to transportation to go to the grocery store. This area needs a walkable grocery. This was mentioned many times when we had community meetings, and they asked, "What do you need? What do we need here in 12 Points?" Grocery store was one of the top topics. They say the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. And the second-best time is now. We could say the same thing about Terra Foods. The best time to open Terra Foods was 20 years ago. The second-best time is now. So let's make this happen now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council members. My name is Erin Warner, 1071 East French Drive. I live out in the county. I am a teacher, local teacher of science at Terre Haute South Eagle High School. I'm the department chair. I'm the local teachers' union president. I'm a former board member of Terra Foods, and I'm a member-owner of Terra Foods. I convinced my mom to join, be a member-owner. I convinced my dad to be a member-owner. This is something we all have faith in. I've heard what my fellow members have talked about. I didn't write a speech down, I probably should've. So I'll take a different tack. There's a 20 rule when it comes to grocery business. 80% go somewhere and 20% go somewhere. When you spend money at Walmart, 80% goes out of town. 20% stays local. When you buy from a local store, it's the opposite. 80% stays local, 20% leads. Terre Haute has a rich grocery history. In 1900, there were 190 grocery stores in Terre Haute. Today, with my class, we counted 14. And it's mostly big stores. In 1997, 20% of grocery dollars went to the Big Four. In 2019, that had risen to 45%. So more money is going to a smaller number of businesses. Terra Foods is a chance to go back, go small once again, and to provide food for thousands of community members that have difficulty having access to someplace far away. Today, I asked one of my students, I asked my students, "Who has driven the furthest for the least recently?" And one student raised her hand, they wanted cilantro. So they drove eight miles to a grocery store just to get a bunch of cilantro. A lot of us don't have that luxury. It would be great if folks could walk just a few blocks to get that same bunch of cilantro. At the same time, this store would be buying from local folks. Walmart has no interest in 10 bushels of apples. Terra Foods would have interest in buying 10 foods, 10 bushes of apples from a local grower. So we'd get a lot more local stuff. We will never have local pineapples. But we certainly can satisfy the need, apples and blueberries, sweet corn in season. And it'd be great to have a place like this in our community. I think it's something we'd all be proud of. I encourage you to vote yes on this. Please, let's turn this from a desert oasis, or a food desert, into a food oasis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have any public comments?
Donald Wayne Hyde, 1411 Poplar Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. I've talked to the, I've talked to you before about this. There is several food deserts in Terre Haute. You're supposed to be a food desert if you have to go more than two miles to get food. There's several neighborhoods around this city, both north and south, where you go more than three miles or four miles. Some of them have to travel as much as five miles. Well, you can do that if you've got a car. What about the people that don't have a car? They gotta ride a bicycle, they gotta walk. There's a lot of elderly people in that category. I don't know what the answer is. I'll be honest with you, I'm like you. I don't know what the answer is about the food desert. One thing I do know, every time you can open up a good grocery store where people can get to it and have a good selection and a fair price, that's good, you ought to do it. So as far as I'm concerned, you ought to pass this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Andrew Connor, 121 Country Club Road. I came tonight with scouts just for our communications merit badge, and I appreciate you hosting us. But I feel compelled to go ahead and comment and urge your support for Terra Foods. I helped start the downtown Terre Haute Farmer's Market. And one of the responses, the reactions that we got from people who came week after week and from visitors and from newcomers was, "This is wonderful. There's nothing like this here. We missed having a farmer's market in downtown Terre Haute. I wish we had it through the winter. I wish we could come not just on Saturdays. We need something more than just this." But this is great, it's a great start. You've heard people talk about how a food co-op can add to food security, how it can fill a spot in the food deserts in our city. And that is critical. But it can also add to the quality of life. As we seek to attract newcomers and visitors and recruits to Terre Haute, having a food co-op is a harbinger. It's a hallmark of a progressive town that they'll want to live in. A food co-op can also be a business incubator. Building on the kind of business model that we've established with the downtown farmer's market, it will help support businesses like the White Violet Center, Firm Fresh, The Harvest Bakery, Anderson's Produce and Greenhouse, L&amp;A Farms, which provides local meat and eggs, and The Hally Hound Barquary. All of those are local businesses that got a start at the downtown farmer's market, where we were just open one day a week part of the year. A food co-op that is open all the time, an outlet for people to begin new small businesses, entrepreneurial efforts, creating a food economy right here in Terre Haute, that is a huge opportunity and something I think that is exciting for us to be a part of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional, no public comments? So I'll post public comments and open council comments? Anyone in the council have any questions or comments? Councilman Chalos?
I would also, obviously, this is in my district, and I would urge the council to vote for it. Obviously, we're in a position where 12 Points people are working very hard to make that area grow and make that into a destination spot locally. I think this is a really big piece of that puzzle. So I would urge the council to go ahead and move and pass this because I think that would be really helpful for that area and the growth of that area. I yield. Just for you.
Councilwoman Thompson?
I spent a lot of time in Bloomington, went to college there, and then went to law school in Champaign. And both of those communities, you know, I heard you speak about Blooming Foods, they both had co-ops. And it's hard to envision it, you know, for someone who hasn't been there before. But it really is an amazing place, and it helps create, you know, greater sense of community. And, you know, most importantly, here for Terre Haute is dealing with that food desert. I mean, I wish we could fix all the food deserts at once, but I think this is a step in the right direction. So I would also, I also support this.
Councilman Azar?
As the elder on the council.
The one with all the wisdom.
When I was growing up in Terre Haute, just my family alone had probably 14 to 16 neighborhood grocery stores. Those stores are long gone, unfortunately. And for something like this to come along, I think, is nothing but amazing and something that this city and that area is, needs. And hopefully, it will spawn other development in other areas that need it. So I urge a vote yes on this. I yield.
Anyone else?
Madam President?
Councilman Nation?
I am a member-owner of Terra Foods Co-op, and I need to recuse myself from this vote. And I'm abstaining from conversation about it, too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you have your hand up again? If there was no more. No further comments?
Madam President?
Oh, hey. Give me time. I think we're gonna take a short pause for a procedural question.
By statute, it has to be unanimous of the council members present. Now, you don't have to vote to have.
You excuse yourself from the vote, but you're under to take action.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Just take action.
Yeah. You're not, you're not voting for it. I understand, thanks.
Yeah, just for the understanding of the public, we will have to vote to take action on this, to move forward with passing it. That requires a unanimous vote. And so Councilman Nation can later recuse himself from the vote to pass it. And so if he chooses to change his request to recuse himself, then we will allow that.
So I rescind my decision to recuse myself from allowing it to proceed at this meeting. Sorry, I jumped the gun.
So that's, we're clear on that now.
With that said.
Councilman Azar?
Madam President, I move that we take action on appropriation 14-2024.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to take action on appropriation 14-2024 made by Councilman Azar, Saklin, and my councilwoman, Louder Milk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam President?
Councilman Chalos?
I move to adopt appropriation 14-2024.
Second. We have.
Point of order.
I recuse myself from this vote. Sorry, folks, this is the first time we've done anything like this. So procedural questions are to be expected.
We all learn from procedural questions, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to approve appropriation 14-2024 made by Councilwoman Chalos, seconded by Councilwoman Louder Milk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we approve appropriation 14-2024. Congratulations to Terra Foods, and I must say, you had an excellent group of cheerleaders here tonight. It's been a long time coming, congratulations.
Thank you.
Appropriation.
Excuse, hold on. I must have missed the call for public comment on a previous item, and I was gonna politely request the opportunity to speak on a previous.
What previous item?
The. The TIF presentation from Baker Tilly. If there was a call for public comment, I didn't hear it and I'm not saying you didn't, Tim.
Yeah, we don't ask for public comments on things that would have been.
A presentation.
A presentation. So maybe at, maybe at the end, if the council's willing. Go ahead, one.
I'll keep it, I'll keep it really short. Really short. I do wanna, I do wanna thank you for your approval of the previous. My great-grandfather, Abraham Leaham, was an owner of one of those small stores and I very much appreciate your approval of that previous motion. As you're going over the report from Baker, I'll back up. My name's Matt Larmer, 363 West Kett Singer Drive. Good evening, council. As you're going over that report from Baker Tilly, I do wanna remind the council that the TIF program was a government program that was designed to help blighted areas of a community receive outside investment that they would never have received otherwise. Like lots of government programs, over the years, it was used for things that were outside of its original intended purpose. It was never meant to subsidize private companies being lured to a community to an industrial park. It was never meant to subsidize hotels being built on prominent downtown real estate. The, the program was never designed for those purposes. So as you're reviewing those documents, I, I really would ask that you also consider, I emailed the council about a tax impact study. I don't think a lot of those things that I requested that would be in the impact study are included in the report. I may be wrong. But some of those things would be whether or not the intended goals of the TIF districts were met, what type of employment increase we saw. But most importantly, I would like a review of the tax impact that those TIF districts are having on local institutions that are not receiving the tax revenue they would otherwise. For example, schools and libraries are not receiving the tax revenue from those areas that they would have received otherwise. And we don't know all of the details of that without a more thorough study. So that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Michelle, you ready now?
Appropriation 152024, $150,000 from ARPA number 0199 to services contractual number 0199 000603 432010. As a reminder, you need a vote to take action.
Thank you. Vittisner?
Yes, good evening. My name's John Etling. I'm the agency director with Catholic Charities here in Terre Haute. I wanna thank the council for allowing us to present tonight. I've got our assistant agency director with me, Jennifer Tames. You'll see on the screen that we've got a presentation to talk about this appropriation. Essentially, food deserts has been mentioned a few times tonight. I just wanna, wanna go into a lot of detail, but the, I guess the definition that we've used within the Food Bank network involves certainly access and the ability to reach a retail grocery store or other areas where nutritious food is located. But food deserts exist in every community, okay? We happen to have, a very high percentage of our community is considered a food desert. But the approximate location to a store would be half a mile. And that qualifies about 67% of our city of Terre Haute as falling into that category. It also affects almost 40,000 people. And really, the, the ability to access nutritious food is what allows people to live active and, and healthy lifestyle. You'll see two different shaded areas on this map. The first is a more of a tan color and that represents where residents do have that distance in order to access food. The, the yellow color is more of a track that identifies where housing of units are located that don't have a vehicle in order to travel to get to where food is. So you'll see red dots, which represent some of the food pantries that we work with, and blue dots that represent the mobile pantries that we provide. And what a mobile pantry is, is a location where we've arranged with a group that allows us to bring a truck that has anywhere from 4,000 to 5,000 pounds of food that we distribute. We advertise in advance, we get the word out, we work with local groups. Partnering is something that is really a trademark of our, of our agency. We've got a 50-year track record here in the Wild Bash Valley of partnering. And that's something we're very proud of. The Food Bank, 40 years as a program within Catholic Charities. But these are, these are lifelines, these pantries. They represent lifelines to a lot of people who otherwise wouldn't be able to get through the end of the month or even the end of the week. So at this point, I wanna turn it over to Jennifer Buehl to continue the presentation. Or Jennifer Tames, I'm sorry.
That's what happens when you change your name after having worked with somebody for over a decade. So. So I wanna talk a little bit about why Terre Haute Catholic Charities Food Bank makes sense and what our qualifications are, quite honestly. John mentioned that Catholic Charities as an organization has been around for 50 years. We celebrated our 50th anniversary last year. The Food Bank has been about 40-plus years. I think we've proven our ability to be able to distribute millions of pounds of food and millions of meals each year to our neighbors who are food insecure. We're gonna be focusing, we're gonna talk about our entire service area and all of the work that we do for Catholic Charities and Terre Haute Catholic Charities Food Bank, but we're focusing the funds on just the city of Terre Haute. So as we talk about Terre Haute Catholic Charities Food Bank, we are a part of a movement for this hunger-free future, a hunger-free America. The Food Bank itself collects, distributes, and warehouses 3.8 million pounds of food each year, which is the equivalent of about 3.2 million meals. We do that in a seven-county service area here in west-central Indiana. Of course, Vigo County is the largest of those in terms of population. And so, of course, the majority of the food that we're distributing stays right here in Vigo County and even more so here in Terre Haute area. We are a community resource and John mentioned our partnerships. We partner with 80-plus other nonprofits across our entire seven-county service area. We can't do this alone. We've never tried to imply that we do it alone. We need these other partners throughout our service area and throughout our community to be able to reach all of those neighbors who are food insecure. We advocate on behalf of those neighbors at a city, a local, a state, and a national level as well. And we're a member of the largest food bank network across the United States and that's Feeding America. So we are one of 200 food banks across the country that are able to provide nutritious food to food insecure neighbors in every single county of the United States. So what's our impact? I mentioned those 3.2 million meals each year that we're distributing that are being served to counties, seven counties here through those partners. We also have a food, our soup kitchen that's providing in excess of 18,000 meals throughout the year. Those meals are being served Monday through Friday at our soup kitchen, our Fishes and Loaves Soup Kitchen, and are distributed as sack lunches on weekends and holidays through Bethany House Emergency Shelter. Part of what we're doing is rescuing food. Food that would otherwise go into a landfill, but is still good quality nutritious food, but maybe it's near or exceeded its best if used by date. That's not an expiration date. The food is still nutritious, it's still safe, and it's still good quality food. Over 2 million pounds of it each year we're able to rescue. And as we look at food insecurity, I think it's important for us to understand the definition of what that is. Food insecurity really talks about that lack of access to enough nutritious food to live a healthy and active lifestyle. If we're talking about our entire service area, children and adults together, we're talking about 1 in 8 of our neighbors is experiencing food insecurity. As we look at children, that increases. 1 in 7 of our children here are food insecure. And most specifically, as we look at childhood food insecurity in Vigo County, we're 35% above the state average. And food insecurity for an adult is one thing. And I don't know if years ago, any of you had maybe heard of or participated in the Hunger Challenge. The United Way partnered with Terre Haute Catholic Charities Food Bank and we encouraged individuals to live on the amount of food that they could purchase each week using their SNAP benefits. A lot of people remember that as being food stamps. My sons and I did that. And I can tell you that it was a challenging experience. Food was at the top of my mind all week long. On Sunday, we went to the grocery store. I had budgeted, I had planned out our menus. We had gone and shopped for the food that we were gonna be able to eat for that week. Throughout the entire week, I thought about food. I thought about my breakfast because if I ate my breakfast too early, then I would worry about if I was gonna be hungry before lunchtime, but I knew I didn't have enough money to have snacks that day to get to lunch. Right? But if I ate my lunch too early, that would mean that before I got to dinnertime, I was gonna be pretty hungry and pretty cranky because I gotta tell you, I'm really hangry when I'm hungry. And then I didn't have any snacks to get me through. And that meant that if I ate my dinner early, because I was hungry early for dinner, that I wasn't gonna have anything until breakfast that morning. And I was only doing this for a week. And I can tell you that my coworkers recognized it in me. So I can't imagine some of our neighbors who are living this day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month, year-to-year. And the children who have to go through this and their meals that they're getting are breakfast at school or lunch at school and maybe they're getting a backpack to take home over the weekend. And as we talk about children, and I'm gonna wrap them up really quickly, is to say that one of the bigger issues with childhood food insecurity is that although we may see those effects as an adult for that day and those hunger pains that we're feeling, children see those effects for an entire lifetime because they end up with cognitive delays and physical development delays. So, and those effects do last throughout their entire life. As we talk about food insecurity, and you all might remember the long lines that we had at some of our distributions in 2020 during the pandemic. The photo on the left shows you our largest distribution where we actually distributed in excess of 1,700 food boxes in one evening down at the Vigo County Fairgrounds. We're not seeing those same lines anymore, but I can assure you that the need is still there. The effects of inflation over the last couple of years, when it was up around 8 and 9% for many months in a row. I know inflation has gone down to 2%, but those prices have risen and they're staying high. We know that some items in the grocery store are costing as much as 30% more now than what they did just a few years ago. And these families are struggling to put good nutritious food on their tables. So those are some of the issues that we're having today. So just a couple of quick comments about where does the Food Bank get its food? We actually have four primary sources. You'll see our retail partners there on top. That's some of that 2 million pounds of rescued food that I mentioned earlier. We are in all of the local retailers, including the ones that you see there, as well as Fresh Time and Bazlers. One, two, and sometimes three days a week, we're picking up a lot of fresh produce that's just past its prime. I like to use the example of a banana because I think everybody has their own version of when they like to buy a banana. Right? But for most people, they don't wanna buy a banana when it starts getting brown spots. Why? Because you're gonna put it on your counter and in a couple of days, it's gonna get even more brown. Right? When we go to the grocery store, we're buying our groceries and we expect them to last four or five or maybe even as long as seven days. But that banana that starts getting brown spots probably needs to be eaten right away. Right? That's some of the type of food that we're rescuing. Still good nutritious, good quality food, but just needs to be eaten quickly. And other places through our Feeding America National Partner, where we're getting some manufacturer donations, purchase product. And then the fourth one is really through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, their commodities program or what's otherwise known as TFAB, the Emergency Food Assistance Program. What we are seeing over the last several years is that the percentage of food that we are having to purchase to make up that healthy nutritious meal for our neighbors is increasing to about 21% of, of the total amount of food that we're distributing. So what started many decades ago as really more of a gleaning program has had to turn into a purchase program for so many of the food banks across the country. And I'm gonna turn it back over to John then to wrap up for us.
So building capacity here in our food desert communities, neighborhoods, we, we think that there's a three-pronged approach here. And the first is to establish more mobile pantry locations. We think that's gonna allow us to get more food into those communities, those neighborhoods, along with trying to expand our existing network of partner food pantries. We've got some more work we, we need to do to recruit more, more organizations. This means a lot of faith-based organizations. It includes a lot of community churches that have some space that we can partner with to create a pantry program. And then increase the capacity of those partners by providing other resources, refrigeration, freezers, shelving, racking, if it's, if it's a large enough operation. This is something that we've, we've discussed for a while, but it's because of the resources that this allocation would mean to us, would allow us to increase that, that offering. So I wanna talk a little bit about how we're gonna report back to y'all because I think that's important. The information I just talked about, mobile pantries, pantries, these are all available information that's on our website. They're all looking for volunteers. And I would invite the council here to come out to one of our mobile pantries and help distribute food. It doesn't require anything other than just a little bit of time. But I think it would give you a great insight in terms of the work that we do, but also some of the struggles that people in our community are having. So building scale is important for getting this food out. Certainly, we're gonna report that, the location, talk about the partners, but also the impact. So we'll be reporting the total number of people served and what that equates to in terms of, of meals. So, you know, we all have a different idea of what a meal looks like. Jennifer mentioned earlier about the pounds of food that we distribute. And it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of pounds. But when we think about what work we do in our communities, equating that to the number of meals makes a lot more sense to most of us. So in addition to that, we also document, we record testimonials from people. We do that in a very confidential and respectful way. It's anonymous. But to hear from the voices of people in our community, what being able to access or have access to good nutritious food means to them and their families, I think. means to them and their families, I think will will be a real heartfelt message for you. So that's it. We've got time for questions if you have any. I do want to thank those of you that have been out to our agency to see the food bank. That's an open invitation for anyone that hasn't had the ability or the time to do that, but we'd love to have you and show you around a little bit. So. Yes.
Just as we review the community plan, the surveys, the feedback that we've received, we had those three public meetings. We have had some additional stakeholder meetings. The food desert conversation is high on the list and it continues to be a priority for the city of Terre Haute and Vigo County as it has been for several decades now. So what I personally enjoy about this project, when we look at capacity building, is the amount of mobile food pantry sites that this is able to open up. As we saw with the previous proposal and this proposal, the walking aspect is more, it's affecting our community more and more and more. And this is one possible solution to that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. At this time, we'll ask for public comments on appropriation 152024. Stand by in case there's any questions.
Donald Wayne Hyde, 1411 Popper Street. Once again, you guys have got something I'm an expert in. And I'm not just talking about an expert. I'm talking about a living expert. I live with it daily. And I'm not alone. There's a lot of elderly people that are on social security that live with it alone. They're on a fixed income. And when inflation hit, it hit everybody. And I know you guys know what I'm talking about because it hit you as well. But I'm telling you, for the people on a fixed income, it really hit them hard. And they had to buy less and less. And it went on, this inflation's been going on for over a year. I used to be able to buy something a year ago, even though I didn't want to pay the money for it, but I could afford it still. I went to the store a couple of days ago. I couldn't buy a couple of things I wanted to buy because they simply wanted too much money for it. And by the way, this idea going up 20%, please, I'm buy things. And when it costs a dollar one month, you go in for the same exact thing and next time it's $2 and something. That's not 25 or 30% higher. That's 100% higher. And more than one thing, it was food. I can walk away and not use because I got a house full of clutter. I don't need much. Believe me, I made sure of that. But the bottom line is there are things you have to have. Have to have air. No problem there. It's not, you know, nobody sells you the air. But is it clean? Two, you got to have water. Nobody can live without water. I don't care who you are. Three is food. And that's where our problem lies right now. Inflation has never hit us so hard in the food aisles as it has this last couple of years. I don't know why, and I don't think you either. But the bottom line is, we've got to do something about it. And so as far as I'm concerned, there's one group here that just spoke to you. They're one of the best groups in the entire city. Thank you, and I support them.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Any additional comments from the public? Okay, at this time, I will close public comments and open council discussion.
Madam President.
Councilman Dinkle.
First, I want to thank John and Jennifer for the opportunity to come up and see the food bank. I got a couple of weeks ago an opportunity to go tour with Councilperson Azar, and it's quite an operation they have there. And the amount of people they serve each and every day is significant. The organization impacts my district in particular because the food bank is in District 6. And you saw from the map that they serve our entire community through their food pantry partners, but also their bread and produce market that happens once a month in my district in a high need area is essential for people to have food. So having said that, I would urge approval of appropriation 152024. I yield.
Thank you. Councilwoman Thompson? Councilwoman Thompson, I'm sorry.
Two questions. The first one for volunteers. Do you allow people that need to do community service hours as part of a court order?
Yes, we do.
Awesome. Make sure, I would like to get your phone number so I can contact you directly about that. Second question, in regards to defining food deserts and defining supermarket. I see a lot of dollar stores, a lot of Dollar Trees that are popping up in Terre Haute. Seems to turn the corner and there's a new one every day. Do those count as supermarkets as, you know, for these definitions in establishing what is the food desert? And this issue with the dollar stores and the Dollar Trees as opposed to supermarkets opening up in Terre Haute? Is that a problem for us and why?
So the first question of are they considered a supermarket by the USDA standards when it's talking about food deserts? And the answer is no. So we're talking about full-service grocery stores there that would have things like fresh produce in addition to the shelf-stable items, fresh meats, frozen foods, dairy. So a lot of the dollar stores have a subsection of those. A lot of the shelf-stable, a limited amount of the refrigerated and frozen. But I'm not aware of any that have the fresh produce in particular. And then your second question was, is that an issue?
Because, you know, I see, you know, one of the big issues is food insecurity comes not from just not having food, but not having nutritious food.
Yep. So I'm glad that you asked that question. And we know through a lot of the work that we're doing with our healthcare partners, the value of nutritious food for a healthy lifestyle. There is a true connection and an integration between those individuals who can eat good nutritious food and have that healthy food and the way it can affect and impact their overall health. So in particular, we're working with the Wabash Valley Health Center and have been over the last few years on what we call a food prescription program. So we're targeting specifically those individuals who are diabetics, have high blood pressure, high cholesterol, or obesity. And we're taking them through a 12-week course where we are working with Purdue Extension to do some of the education and training. And our own nutrition outreach educator is providing some of the actual cooking classes that's involved with that as well. And then we also provide them with some of that fresh produce and then other food that they can take home and make some of those new recipes that are much healthier, low sodium, low cholesterol, low saturated fat. We are seeing significant improvements in those particular areas of reduced cholesterol, reduced A1C, and reduced weight. That's on one side of that. The other side is, I'm going to tell you, is that we are also working as a food bank to rank all of the food that comes into the food bank. And I have to say, not all of it. We're ranking about 80% of it because so much of it comes through as individual one-off items that it's hard for us to spend the time and individually rank that. But those items that come in palletized or in large enough quantities, we're actually ranking it on what's called the H-E-R Guidelines Scale. That's Healthy Eating Research Scale. And it's a green, yellow, red. So green, choose often. Yellow, choose sometimes. Red, choose infrequently, rarely. And so that ranking system is available to our agencies who come to shop at the food bank. And then we are rolling out a toolkit to our food pantries in particular that they can then utilize that same stoplight structure at their own pantries. So that way, their neighbors who are coming in to shop can see which are those products that they should be choosing often and which of those they should be choosing rarely. So nutrition and health work hand in hand. And I think the importance of having full grocery stores or someplace who can come in and provide that fresh nutritious produce is one of the most important things we can do.
And I agree wholeheartedly with that. And I would love to see less Dollar Tree, less Dollar General, and more supermarkets and more agencies like yours. But I yield, Madam President.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Hinton.
Thank you so much for being here tonight and the work that you do. I have a question about food insecurity at Indiana State University and those students. Are they included in your data, in your numbers and terms? And I know that Campus Ministries has a food pantry. I think there's one on campus, but they're always so under-inventoried. So have you partnered with the university at all?
Yes, we have. It's been a disrupted relationship sometimes, but we do partner with them. And they are part of those statistics that you see on the map. You know, the, both Indiana State and Ivy Tech have students that fall into that food insecurity category. So we're constantly trying to find ways to reach into that population and provide them with access to nutritious food. So.
My next question, thank you. I hope you can strengthen that partnership. I happen to be on Campus Ministries when they formulated their first food pantry and struggled for a very long time. My next question is, I looked at the map and my little district is on there as a serious food apartheid area. And there was a little dot with one little pantry. Is your mobile service going to locate? Or how are you going to?
I'm going to get back to the map. So which of those areas is your service area?
Holman. Get a little microphone. Holman, Washington, Margaret.
So this little dot that's around 19th and Holman?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, so that's, I'm trying to remember the name of the church that's there.
The Church of Holman.
It's the 20th and Holman, I think is where it is exactly.
Free Life?
I'm drawing a blank, but it's, yeah, so that's a very active pantry that's located there. Our goal would be to find partners that are within those shaded areas. And the real criteria is that they're willing to partner with us, basically. We do have a few rules that need to be adhered to, and that's probably true with any reputable food service industry in terms of food safety. But otherwise, it's really a matter of location. So and I suppose, you know, given traffic patterns and the ability to park and walk up, one of the things that we really want to get back to is giving people choice, not just shoving a box into the trunk of their car when it's convenient, but also, you know, to allow them to take food that they will use. You know, we all have different preferences. We all have maybe food allergies. So we want to make sure that the food is going to be used. You know, we don't want to just, for the sake of distributing food, put it out there. But we want to make sure that people realize what they're taking and how they can best use it.
Yes, there are three public housing facilities in that district. Margaret, Lockport. And even the, on 19th Street. Greenwood, ma'am.
Greenwood.
It's a Section 8 housing space.
Yeah, and I think the point of public housing, we currently have a mobile distribution once a month at Drycer Square.
Drycer Square.
Yep, I knew I'd get it. So we do partner with housing already. In fact, they were our first mobile distribution where we encouraged Union Health to come on board with us and to do monthly medical checks. So now they have pop-up clinics that they are doing at some of our food pantries and mobile distributions throughout the city as well. So we're trying to meet people where they are. Again, that linkage between good nutrition and health, not only us bringing that good food to them, but also partnering with Union Health to bring some of that medical support as well.
Thank you. I yield.
Councilman Charles.
John, to Councilwoman Hinton's point, that mobile pantry, let's say she sees a need in her district. How does she contact and say, hey, there's an area? And how would that work if she saw a need?
I can give you my cell number or office number, but I think it starts with conversation, I think. And really helping us understand some of the needs of those districts and where we might find those partners. You know, listen, it's about relationships. We, I think our community's learned something in the last couple of weeks about what relationships mean. And this is where we start to build those relationships by having the conversation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam President.
Councilman Nation.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we take action on appropriation number 152024.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to take action on appropriation 152024 made by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Dinkle. All those in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
And you opposed? We can now take action.
Madam President.
Councilman Nation.
I move for approval of appropriation 152024.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve appropriation 152024 made by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Dinkle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appropriation 152024 passes.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And Jennifer.
Michelle.
Appropriation 162024. $64,000 from Edit #04040096, the services contractual #0404009603432010. As a reminder, you must vote to take action.
Councilwoman Bowen and members of the City Council, this one is a little bit confusing, so bear with me. In the final quarter of 2023, the city of Terre Haute engaged in a contractual agreement with an organization called Make My Move. Make My Move basically recruits people to move to your community. To put the numbers in, 4,000 people have reached out to Make My Move to move and relocate to the city of Terre Haute from then to now. This 64,000 is a reimbursement from the state of, not the state of Indiana, from the IEDC and Make My Move, who we are partnered with. So we essentially write a check to these families when they move in and the state reimburses us about 75-ish percent. Those funds go to the Edit operating fund and must be reallocated back to services contractual where the original 150,000 sits that is used to pay out. So this allows us to take the funds, the reimbursements that we received, and put them back into the service line that we were originally using the services for. I know it seems a lot, but I just kind of wanted to walk us through.
Thank you for that explanation, Mayor. So 75% is the, does the individual who's using this program get about 5,000 bucks? Is that what I remember?
Yes, and then there's, I believe there's a family option that's up to 7,500, yeah.
So then how many people have actually moved here as a result of this program?
This year alone, that number is 22 firm. And then there's, I think, 100-ish that are in the hopper, to use a former phrase.
Great. And this is money that comes to us. We've got to front it, but it comes back to us after we've, most of it comes back to us after we've been successful.
And it does highlight that, you know, moving forward, that Edit budget, what we owe you in 2025 is essentially breaking that out a little bit better and showing you what the line items are in something like, for example, services contractual. Because by it not being broken out for a project specific, one, it forces us to do this, but two, it does create a little bit of confusion of the administrative action to bring it back.
I remember when this idea originally came before the council and we were asked, and it predates some of the folks who are on the council now because it was an effort that started last year. But anyway, I thank you for the report and it's all positive stuff. I was curious if we had yielded any results from this.
Our next report should be in three, we're trying to do them around quarterly. Of course, we missed it in March, but we are in close communication with Make My Move. They are actually going to focus their marketing efforts on Terre Haute a little bit better when they start laying out their list. And the station co-working facility has actually been huge in this relationship because you're seeing a lot of remote workers come in. So we are watching those numbers go up as well.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the floor for public comments on appropriation 162024. 162024. Any public comments? With that, I will close public comments and open council discussion.
Madam President?
Yes?
If there's no further discussion, I move that we take action on appropriation number 162024.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to take action on appropriation 162024 made by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Chalos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can now take action on appropriation 162024.
Madam President?
Councilman Nation?
I move that we approve appropriation 162024, and after this, I'll let other council members make motions.
We have a motion on the floor to approve appropriation 162024 made by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Chalos. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appropriation 162024 passed. Michelle?
Appropriation 172024, $2 million from ARPA, #0199, to Services Contractual #0199000603432010. As a reminder, you must vote to take action.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman Bowen and members of the City Council. Today, we have before you a $2 million appropriation for funds from the American Rescue Plan Act to the Services Contractual line to start the process of bringing access to Indian-American water to approximately 380 to 400 homes. So if you can kind of visualize this with me, if 13th Street is our western boundary, Haythorne is our north boundary, Boston is our southern boundary, and 25th and Lafayette is our eastern boundary, that is the area that we are focusing our efforts on.
Can you repeat the number of homes, please?
380 to 400.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
And I know several of us met with Indian-American Water to cover this specifically, but to provide the background, a couple of years ago, the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission made a concept like this possible. Essentially, your utility company will buy into this program and provide funding for the water mains, and through the American Rescue Plan, the city has an opportunity to provide the tap-on fee for residents. Right now, if you have a well, you have a flat rate on your sewage bill. This is going to allow you to have, one, access to Indian-American water, and then we will go to each door to that community and say, hey, based off this program, based off your household size, your usage, here is what your proposed cost will now be month to month if you access Indian-American water services. It's about 2,500 to 3,000 the cost to tap on to a water main if it's right in front of your house. In this situation, the cost is exorbitant because there are not water mains in this section of Terre Haute. So this will be the first of hopefully many projects that we bring to the City of Terre Haute to sequentially attack the pockets in our community that don't have water mains on their roads and therefore cannot, I mean, you're asking a homeowner to have, or a home builder to have an additional cost right off the bat that is 3,000 if that water mains in front of you, but if it is not, if it's blocks away, that's why these costs go up when it comes to tapping on to Indian-American water. So why now, why this appropriation? This would start a four-month process of community meetings with this neighborhood, community engagement with this neighborhood, and us communicating what this service can offer, doing cost projections, meeting with these residents. Because the more residents that sign up, the more dollars that Indian-American Water, one, commits to this project, and actually, the cheaper it is for our $2 million to be optimized, essentially. If we have, say, 25 homes on one street, we can, with one contractor, cover 25 tap-on fees. But if there's five individuals on one street and seven on another street, that's what's, that's what would cause the cost to fluctuate. So our estimates currently today are showing, with $2 million, we can hit 380 to 400 homes over the course of 2025 and early 2026 in a partnership with Indian-American Water.
So at this time, we'll open the floor for public comments on appropriation 172024.
Water is essential for everybody to have. However, how you get the water is dependent upon the water company. Now, the water company has, if you're close enough, if you're on one block and there's six houses, they'll put water to every one of the houses. It's their job. If they want to get a water bill from us, they gotta have it. Now, if you can go without water, they don't have anything to do with you. I know about that, too. And it can be done. However, you're talking about the distance they have to go to get the water hooked up. And I think we've got a big problem coming up in the next few years that this is part of. We're gonna have to really watch how we build things and how we put things in the ground, probably for the next 10 to 20 years, because the weather's not gonna change, it's gonna get worse. And the building codes are gonna have to be updated for the new weather that we're coming up with. Now, water has to do with that, on how far it goes. Now, if it's underground, I got no problem with that. Above ground, I'm seeing all the, every news show I see, I see the same thing you see. This country is being hit by the weather, and hit differently, as if the seasons have moved in the last 20 years. And they're no longer, winter no longer begins on December 21st, it begins more like on December 1st. Spring no longer begins in March, begins in April, which we're in now. Summer, I don't know when it begins. It's ridiculous. But the problem's this, we have to really start looking at how we put things in the ground, water-wise, and how we build things, because we're gonna have to update all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
I wasn't planning on speaking on this topic, but Matt Larmour, 363 West Cut Singer Drive. My family lived with an unreliable well for years, and we had access to water, but we couldn't afford the tap-on fee. Members of our community kind of found out that I was hauling water weekly. With seven kids, you go through water pretty quickly. And they came together and helped us to pay the tap-on fee, and it made an incredible difference in our lives. And so, I didn't, wasn't even aware this was gonna be spoken on tonight, but it sounds like a great opportunity, especially to help people that may struggle to pay, you know, a fee to connect. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, public comments? Okay, at this time, I'll close public comments, open council discussion. Councilwoman Lauter?
I guess I'll probably speak first on this, since this really is my district. And I started working on this with former Mayor Duke Bennett and with Indian-American Water. I see Dave Baker back there. Dave thinks for everything that you have done. When Indian-American Water actually went to the state legislation to try to get some of this done, I testified on behalf of trying to do this. For those of you that don't know a history, this is not new. This has been, they've been trying to get water up there for 20-some years. My husband tried this when he was on the council. And this is just a tool that we have now received from the utility to be able to help those up there. You know, it has to meet, for Indian-American Water to be able to do it, there's certain requirements. It has to meet a certain density, there has to be so many homes, and the income. There are a few other pockets in the City of Terre Haute that I believe need to be addressed in the future also. I just think that it's one of those things that I've always said, you sit in the City of Terre Haute, you should be, at least be able to have the opportunity to have the mains, to be able to hook up, if so be it. And this area has been in the city limits for, I don't know how many years now. So I am happy to see this come, you know, I'm not saying that everyone's gonna sign up. It is an opportunity for them. I hope that they, the residents, see that it is a great opportunity, that the city is trying to help them to get good drinking water. You know, if, as Mr. Larmour, your well goes out, you have to drop a new well, that's pretty expensive to come up with all at one time. Also up there, the fire hydrants, and I see several of the firemen back here can testify that we don't have very many fire hydrants up there in several homes. So, I hope that I can get the council's support on this, to see this move forward, and that we can make this a program that we can eventually help those other areas that are in the city to have the same infrastructure. To me, when I read the ARPA bill, infrastructure was a main part of what ARPA could be used for. So I think that this fits in just perfect in that. So, I yield. Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Councilwoman Hinton? Thank you, I'm sorry. I would like to chime in, my support for this particular, for this particular bill. This is a hot-topic button for me also, particularly in my district. Again, as I was campaigning, this was something new for me. Many of the folks in my district don't have tap water either. And so that was one of the things I said I would try to make happen. And as we've gone through this process, it makes sense in terms of the formula, in terms of density of homes, that it would make, you know, it more cost-effective. I'm looking forward to the next phase of this. I think the next most dense space might be in my district, but certainly, all over the City of Terre Haute, if folks, as Mr. Larmour said, if people, it affects quality of life when you don't have tap water. The folks that I spoke to can't cook with the water, they don't drink the water, they barely bathe with the water from their wells, some of it is contaminated. And so, folks, it is a basic need, and full support of this particular ordinance, or appropriation.
Thank you. Madam President? Councilwoman Thompson?
More of a question. So, the 2025 to 2026, is that when you estimate this phase will be completed?
So it's an 18 to 24-month timeline. The next four months is really, really critical, though, right? Getting the, so that could increase it. One part of this project that I do appreciate is, the city, actually, city engineering has a lot of ownership in this, because we will be able to connect with the contractors who do the tap-on. So it's, we're able to, like, basically prioritize which streets more individuals are signing, so we can do a rolling project instead of just waiting to see how many in the area. And one reason why I'm pushing for it now, these next four months, is we have to look at the ARPA timeline and say, hey, you know, I firmly believe we're on track to appropriate the money, but spending it by 2026 is very important, too, right? As we've heard time and time today, costs do go up. But more importantly, we are seeing more development in North Terre Haute. We're seeing more homes being, part of this situation is fire safety. We have seen homes catch on fire where there's not a fire hydrant to connect to. So, we're happy to be here. Members of the Fire Department, the Fire Union are also here, and they've played an integral part in this conversation, because quality of life is the drinking water, as well as public safety, as well as something like homeowner's insurance. And all of these factors will come into play and be a part of the next four-month conversation.
And my next question is, knowing that timeline, is the plan to go ahead and target that next community for the water hookup, or wait until this particular project has been completed?
I can't give you a firm answer on that right now, to be honest. We're gonna have to look at it. I mean, the hope is you can do prudent planning during this phase, and we really need to see how much buying we get, what communication tools are working, and then conduct an after-action review while we're planning for the next neighborhood. Because the goal would be, the next project we do is just simply more efficient, because you guys have been through it, we've been through it, engineering, legal, Controller's Office, and the Fire Department's been through it. So, not the best answer for you today, to be honest.
It's an honest answer, I appreciate that. Then my last question would be, so of these 380 to 400 homes, let's say only 100 homeowners buy in, does that end the project?
We would be able to accomplish some of those 100 homes, but it would depend on their location, right? Like, if you have 20 in a row versus 10 here, 10 there, so it would be based off of density. And then, you know, the goal, of course, is to take the $2 million and apply it to as many individuals as possible in a timely manner, and then word the ARPA document and what we submit to the federal government in a way that if people do not capitalize in one neighborhood, we could roll over. But that's very procedural, close conversation with Baker, Tilly, and RJL on that.
Gotcha. I yield. Okay. Councilman Chalos?
Yeah, looking at this $2 million, this is a heck of an investment in the north end. Most folks know that I'm a retired firefighter, and I've had the opportunity of looking for plugs up in the north end during a house fire. And, you know, I'd like to thank Mayor Bennett, but I also want to thank Mayor Sackman for picking this ball up and running with it, because I think it's amazing for our north end, Indiana American Water. But also, you know, I've got to applaud Councilwoman Lauter for her hands-on approach on this. I mean, it wouldn't have gotten done without her hard work, and I thank the folks up there in that district who are very fortunate to have you. So, I yield.
Anyone else? Councilman Nation?
I remember going to a meeting in Terrytown School back in 2011 and hearing about the contaminated wells that the people in Terrytown were contending with, and trying to come up with a strategy to do exactly what's being discussed today. This is, as Councilwoman Lauter pointed out, this is a problem that's been a problem for a long time, and it's important that we solve it. As a communication tool, I wonder if the population of Terrytown Elementary School has been considered, and if the school itself could be a communication vector for getting into the affected households. Because it was a good place to meet and talk about this, and I think that it might be a good way to communicate with the families up there. On that note, I yield.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, I have another question, based on some of the communication that we had with Indian-American Water. And I applaud both the administration and Indian-American Water for doing everything they could to educate us in advance of coming and asking for this appropriation. There's also, potentially, not part of this plan, but by bringing this infrastructure to that area, an opportunity for future development, right? I think you kind of touched on that, but we know our industrial park is reducing in, you know, the amount of size it has, and there's a lot of opportunity up on that north side to invest in future industrial investment, potentially. So this will meet that need should we have someone come with an interest in a big expansion, or something required that infrastructure to be there. Is that, would that be accurate?
Yes, that would be accurate. And then, even if you were wanting to build in a area around it, say you're not on the exact street with the main, then you can have a conversation about whether it's a developer or reinforcement main, and those are other tools that city government and Indian-American Water utilize to open up something like State Road 46, or expand capability for a project like INTECH. So, that type of industry should not be limited to the regions where it's at now. So this is, that is a longer-term vision, but short answer, yes.
Thank you, appreciate it. And I don't know anything about anything that might potentially be going there, I just wanted to be clear on that answer to that investment. Totally hypothetical. Anyone else?
Anyone else? Council President? This time, Councilwoman Lautermeier?
If there's no further discussion with the council, I'd like to make a motion that we take action on Appropriation 17, 2024.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to take action on Appropriation 17, 2024, made by Councilwoman Lautermeier, seconded by Councilwoman Hinton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appropriation 17, 2024 is approved for action.
Let's to take action.
Madam President?
No, you should go ahead.
Madam President? Councilwoman Lautermeier?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Appropriation 17, 2024, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor to approve Appropriation 17, 2024, made by Councilwoman Lautermeier, seconded by Councilwoman Hinton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appropriation 17, 2024 is approved. Okay. Michelle?
General Ordinance 2, 2024, meaning City Code Chapter 8, Section 8-13, removing synchronized intersection at 3rd Avenue and 13th Street in Section 8-10, creating a two-way stop intersection at 3rd Avenue and 13th Street. You must vote to take action.
Krishna?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Marcus Meyer, City Engineer. I'm here tonight to ask you to consider General Ordinance 2, which would be the removal of the traffic signal at 13th and 3rd Avenue. This signal has been inoperable for a while. But first, I'm going to go back in time just a little bit to kind of where we are and kind of some of our goals. The city of Terre Haute operates over, operates, owns, and maintains over 100 traffic signals. Much of our network is very aged and needs considerable upgrades. So prior to the signal becoming inoperable, we were starting to look at some of these signals, looking to see which signals should be there, which met warrants, which signals wouldn't. This was one of them that came to the top of the list of ones to be removed. And I apologize for not bringing it to you sooner, but it's also given you a unique opportunity to see that the signal has been inoperable, and it has provided a safe and efficient opportunity. So we have reviewed all the traffic incidents that have occurred since, well, prior to, you know, this, the study, we'd reviewed all the traffic incidents in the area to see if it's still warranted. This unique opportunity, since the traffic signal's been inoperable, we've reviewed any traffic incidents since it's been in this, this condition. And there have been zero reported traffic incidents in the current setup. If you look at the traffic study, which you should have, I hope, you'll see that the signal warrants, the key ones we looked at would be the eight-hour, the four-hour, and the peak hour. The traffic numbers just don't justify a signal in this location. And as I mentioned, the accident data doesn't meet the criteria either. And another, you know, key thing to note in this is if you look at the numbers of traffic, 13th Street far outweighs 3rd Avenue, and there's a lot of people delayed by this. So in the average day, there's over 22 hours of delayed traffic. And that doesn't mean traffic jams, but each individual delay added together in a 24-hour period, there's 22 hours of lost time there in delays. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone from the public voice to comment on General Ordinance 1?
Donald Hyde, 1411 Papa Street. I read the thing, and I must have misread it, because he wants to take out the stoplights and put in two stop signs. I don't know where he lives, but where I live, 13th Street and 8th Avenue is literally one of the busiest streets in the whole city. If you're going to put up stop signs, at least put up four of them. Thank you.
Mr. Hyde, you misread. It's 8th, it's 3rd Avenue, not 8th Avenue, where Chauncey Rose used to be.
And I don't care at all.
Thank you.
That's, that's good.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this? Okay, I'll close public comments and open council discussion. Councilman Chalos?
Yeah, this is my district, and I got a chance to talk with Marcus, one of his office. I think you've taken time with me. And after talking to him, that's when I decided to introduce it. Went down there and looked at it, and I think that'd be just fine. It's been closed, like he said, for several months. We talked about the study on accidents also, and there hasn't been none, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Councilman Nation?
Marcus, you said that this one comes to the top of your list for traffic signals to take out. I'm of the opinion that we should be looking critically at many of our traffic signals within the city. What are the next couple that you can, that we can anticipate you bringing to us to be removed?
I'll have to get back to you on that. Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I know I've got two studies that show that there's two of them. And, you know, we may talk a little later tonight about the path forward.
And another question, you know, signals are one thing, how about flashing lights? You know, I, I note that a lot of the flashing lights and some of the signals are at places where there used to be schools that are no longer clo, that are no longer schools. I think that they are, that, you know, there are a lot of those around that we pay to have, for, to have flashing all the time. We pay to maintain them, and they're no longer needed. So I welcome your input on how we might help administratively, bureaucratically, give you the power to take out some of the stuff that is no longer needed that we're paying for. Thanks, I yield.
Yeah, and that's, flashing signals is another, another one we're looking into. That one probably can come to you a lot sooner than signals. Signals take a lot of time and a lot of, we want to make sure we make the right decisions on those. And the studies are time-consuming, and they do impact a lot of people that use those signals for access. And we just want to make sure that we choose the right ones and can justify those actions. Because we don't want to, we want to make a safer and more efficient transportation network.
Any further council discussion?
We're letting you make the motion, Joe.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to take action.
I move to take action on General Ordinance 2, 2024.
Second.
At this time, we have a motion on the floor to take action on General Ordinance 2, 2024, made by Councilman Chalos, seconded by Councilman Dinkle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can now move forward with General Ordinance 2, 2024.
I move to adopt General Ordinance 2, 2024.
Second.
Motion on the floor to adopt, adopt General Ordinance 2, 2024, made by Councilman Chalos, seconded by Councilman Dinkle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? General Ordinance 2, 2024 is approved. Adopted. Michelle?
General Ordinance 3, 2024, meaning City Code Chapter 4, Article 9, EMS user fees. As a reminder, you have a vote to take action.
Madam President, council members, Derek Scott, Fire Chief, Terrell Fire Department. First of all, thank you for voting on Appropriation 17 for my, for the safety of my firefighters, my troops. I appreciate that. I've worked in Station 7 for the past 15 years, and just like Councilman Chalos, I've had to search long and hard for some hydrants in the middle of night, so I appreciate that. And it's not only for my troops, but for the public, so thank you. Since January 2nd, when I took over, we started looking over a lot of things from the prior administration and looking at our capital outlays. Our capital outlays are additional equipment that we have to buy for our, on a timeline, engines, aerials, fire gear, which we're looking at right now. And we started noticing a problem. We've all been addressing it all evening, and that's inflation. And as you know, the capital outlays of the fire department are paid out of the non-reverting EMS fund. We had a chief's meeting. I'm going to give the floor to Chief Luther, but she developed a plan to ensure that we don't put a burden on the general fund. We can provide the equipment, the fire gear, and everything needed for the men and women of the Terrell Fire Department, and not burden the taxpayer or the general fund. So I'll yield to Deputy Chief Luther.
Good evening, council. Again, my name is Diana Luther, I'm the Deputy Chief of EMS, and I just want to go over with you the EMS user fee justification. So first, I want to make sure we state that this is not a tax to the public. A person will only receive a bill if they actually use our service. So if we transport them to the hospital, they will then receive a service. The EMS non-reverting fund, like Chief Scott said, pays for our capital expenses on the fire department. So that will be our apparatus, fire gear, SCBA. Just a couple of examples. In 2018, an ambulance cost us $273,000. We just got an ambulance this year for $444,000. From 2011 till now, our fire apparatus, not just ours, across the nation, fire apparatus has increased 100%. And again, if this is, if the EMS non-reverting fund were to ever go away, this would go to the general fund, so this pays for a lot of our expenditures. We're currently proposing an initial increase, and then a 5% increase for the next four years after. With that, the National Association of Emergency Medical Technicians did a study for the last couple of years, and the two columns on the left, they are what departments across the nation have spent in supplies as well as equipment for the last three to four years. On average, 70% of the departments state they have had a 10% greater or greater increase in expenditures. And then the columns on the right, these are going to be future expenses, and it's the same, it's the same number. So 10%, at least, or sorry, 70% of agencies across the United States, again, are projecting another 10% increase in expenses. This is an example of what we have actually incurred. So this is a cardiac arrest from 2022 to 2024. This is one of our more expensive runs that we go on. We're essentially throwing everything in our medical kit to save this person's life. In 2022, we spent $490, and in 2024, we spent $575, making it an increase in two years of $86.38. This is a 7.5% increase each year for a total of a 15% increase in this two-year window. On the bottom, it also has our ambulance maintenance fees, as well as fuel. And as you guys know, fuel costs aren't going down anytime soon, so. The next thing we did, we reached out to AccuMed. AccuMed is our billing group, and what we did was ask them for other agencies who are comparable us to, comparable to us either in size or in run volume. So we are the first two columns, Terre Haute for the resident and the non-resident, and then there's agencies A, B, C, and D. A resident, I want to clarify, is anyone that truly lives in the city limits of Terre Haute. Anybody who lives in the county is considered a non-resident, and obviously, anyone else in the country would be considered non-resident. As you can see, well, I guess I should explain. An ALS emergency that you guys see on the board, these are one of our bigger entities that we, or run types that we run on. This is, we might have to start an IV or put a patient on a monitor, we might have to push some medications. The other big one that we experience are BLS emergencies. This is, we take your vital signs, we might have to bandage you up a little bit, and then we transport you to the hospital. These are the two big ones that I'll be talking about this evening. But as you can see, with Agency A, we are slightly comparable to them. Agencies B and D, they are far more advanced in their billing than, than what, or billing rates than we are. I also would like to explain to you what our payer mix is. This is in the Terre Haute, in Terre Haute, Indiana. Medicare makes up 51% of the revenue that we receive. Of that 51%, we are only able to receive 80% of what Medicare bills us. The other 20%, if they have a secondary insurance or if they have Medicaid, we will attempt the 20%, otherwise it does not come to us. And then Medicaid is the big one. Medicaid is our second-largest payer of 32% of all of our revenue. And what hurts is that only 45% of what we bill is actually brought back to us. That 55% is written off, and we do not receive any funds from that. Insurance then covers 12%, and self-pay is 5%. For 2023, our average cost of recovery per run was $345.75. So I'll flip back real quick. As you can see, for a resident, it's really hard. A resident ALS emergency is $650, and a BLS emergency is $550. So again, $345.75 is what we recouped off of those types. So what we are projecting or suggesting, we then reached out to AccuMed again and asked what, where should we be? And of course, they state that we can't tell you where to be, but we can give you suggestions. So what they did is they gave us a low-end suggestion as well as a high-end suggestion. And we ended up taking for the resident's side, we went with the low-end suggestion, and then the non-resident's side gets the high-end suggestion. So the first year, we will have an increase, okay? And then every year after that would be a 5% increase. So I went ahead and I showed you year five, what it would be projected with the 5% increase. If this were to go, or if this were to pass, this would go into effect starting July 1 of this year, and then we would see the new rates starting next year.
We're open for any questions or comments that you might have.
Let's open the floor for public comments first, and then we'll have council discussion and ask at that time.
Donald Hyde, 1411 Papa Street. I appreciate what they said, and I understood most of it. However, they did not give us a detail, make up a call. Somebody just had a heart attack or been hit by a car. What equipment are you taking there immediately? And then, when you get there, what equipment and what things you do that makes you bill the way it is? I'd like a, more of a definition along those lines, and you can make it up, I don't care.
Use Mr. Hyde as an example, you're going to.
So for example, if we have, if we have a person who's experiencing chest pain, obviously, you've got your apparatus, you're, you have two paramedics that are on the apparatus. And then in that, you're going to have your cardiac monitor. You'll have a, a bag that has all of our IV equipment in it, any medications that we might need. And also with the monitor, if someone should go into cardiac arrest, meaning their heart stops beating, we have that monitor that can take care of that for us.
But you also transport them to the.
Yes, there's, there's a cot, we take the cot out of the back of the truck, and then we transport to the hospital as well.
So all that, yeah.
For any refreshment?
The addition. Yeah. I would also like to state that not only are we seeing increases in our capital expenditure, we're also seeing increases in the supplies that we use, so medical supplies. And that's what I was trying to show you on that cardiac arrest page. The other thing is this technology. We're trying to stay top of the, top of the line with our medical technology. We do have cardiac compression devices now that take place of a person doing manual compressions, and we have, our cardiac monitors are top of the line as well.
Any other public comments? We'll close public comments and open council discussion.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Thompson?
In regards to the Agency A, B, C, and D, are those communities that are in a comparable size to Terre Haute or have similar run numbers?
Yeah, so we are able to actually, AccuMed will not tell us what actual agencies are, but they assure us that it is someone that either, either is our city's size, volume, or the number of runs that we go on every year.
Okay. Given that, this is first term on city council, so I'm learning a lot. And one of the things that really surprised me at the last hearing when engineering had their presentation about discussing some changes in our fee scales, it was really shocking to me how low on the end Terre Haute is compared to other cities or size. I don't know if that's just because there wasn't an effort to change things over the last several years, but I would like to see us address these types of fees, because when looking at other cities. Because when looking at other cities, clearly, we're missing something. And having these types of funds, it's gonna make the fire, firefighter system better, the ambulance system better, make the community better as a whole. So, you know, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. I think looking to these other communities is a good way of gauging where we are and where we need to be. One thing that struck me with some of these agencies, these other agencies, I know you went with the, the low end. Sticking with that, the low-end number that you've proposed, is there a benefit, you think, to perhaps starting an even higher number that's even closer to, you know, Agency B or C? Or do you think just the increase that you've proposed is sufficient?
After doing a lot of studying, I can tell you this, that we believe with you that we need to look at all these rates that affect the fire department and affect the general fund, or absolutely protect the general fund. And, you know, we looked at cost of living. We threw out a lot of things. I met with some council members, and we threw out cost of living maybe. And that was some years 19%, some years 2%. We looked at what we could do to affect our citizens that do use this service. We came to the middle of the road at 5%. I can't sit here and tell you that, as you can see, our inflation rate and percentages are below 5%. But I would, I would think that, I'm not gonna sit here and make a promise. I might be here two years to talk to you and say, hey, look, the past two or three years, it's staying at 7% or 8%. We need to move the actuator up 5%. But I think at the beginning, we felt, of course, it's your decision. We're bringing something to, to, to you. But we picked 5% as, as a start, and it's up for discussion. I think the mayor also met with the mayor, and I'll let the mayor speak.
So, you know, this is, it's a hard conversation, right? From a quantitative perspective, would I agree that a 7% actuator or moving to the higher end makes sense? Yes. But what I also agree is, from an organizational standpoint, we are working to improve something like ambulance billing, right? We're trying to close the gap and be more competitive in terms of how we communicate with hospitals in town and out of town to receive those bills. The best change that I believe we could do outside of increasing the fee is just being better at billing. You guys actually allowed us to do that already in January by approving that, that new billing gal who works in the office with the rest. So we are looking at that billing percentage and seeing it steadily improve, knowing that that combined with this fee, we, we believe is the right answer, but.
So this would take effect July 1st. So come, you know, December 31st, at the end of the year, we could look at those numbers again and see if, you know, we maybe need to increase the base rate and the actuator?
I, I would prefer we did that 18 months from now. Because we, that would only give us six months of data. I mean, if you do want it then, then we can do it then, yeah. But I, I would honestly prefer 18 months. That gives us a full calendar year with the new billing group, with a revamped billing group, to be honest, and them improving on 2023 numbers and 2022 numbers. So letting us organizationally improve that billing is just as important. And so two calendar years instead of one, I, I would defer to that.
And in regards to the projected revenue, yeah, just, you know, so it's clear, we're talking about basically 80% is coming from Medicaid and Medicare reimbursement from the federal government. So this isn't coming from local taxpayers?
Yeah.
It, it's coming from the federal government?
And, and there are finally conversations at the state level about Indiana's, I believe it's Medicaid percentage being 57%.
Okay.
19 other states have gone to DC and worked with DC to get that number improved. Our, our state is slow at times. Let's just, let's call spade a spade here. And so they're finally having those conversations at the state legislature. That improvement alone would be incredibly beneficial to communities like Terre Haute, where is a large portion of the population on Medicare and Medicaid. Yes. But that portion uses the ambulance way more than folks who have insurance or who pay cash. Not, not sure why they do that. But Medicare/Medicaid population, the state funding, the federal funding, this, a lot of the dollars are coming out of that. I mean, we're, our, our dollars are already going to DC. This is helping us get some of it back, is the simplistic way of wording.
And the projection with this in place, using the collection rates we already have, what, was it $500,000, we think, maybe increase in collections?
Yeah. Yeah. We are projecting, again, it is really hard to give you a factual, actual number just because we don't know what the, how many runs we're going to have for the year as well as the run type. So if it's an ALS versus a BLS, and then who is our payer source? So if it comes that we get more Medicare, then, you know, we're actually gonna receive less than that, but yes.
And that's $500,000 for the, the rest of the 2024 calendar year?
Correct.
So that would just be over, over six months. We're looking at almost a half-million-dollar collection.
Yes.
And then that money, if you could explain how that money, where that goes then?
Yeah. So the EMS fund is an EMS non-reverting fund. So that money does not go back to the general fund. I did clarify that. But we do give a percentage to our EMS train, or sorry, our, our fire training non-reverting fund at the end of the year.
Right. So these funds do make their way back to help improve the fire department?
Yes.
Absolutely. Just this Monday, financing was approved. We got the percentage rates for our two new engine companies that'll be here in May. About six years ago, an engine company was about $400,000. Two engines, $1.5 million. So that's the, that's the increase we're seeing. So that immediately, that immediately, the loan, about the lease, we paid out of the non-reverting fund. We're looking at fire gear, what, three years ago was $3,500. We're looking at, with the committee from the union, we're looking at nothing fancy, still state-of-the-art fire gear like we had last time, but a $2,000 increase in less than four years. So that also is getting ready to go to the Board of Public Works for lease, and that will be paid out of the EMS non-reverting fund. Anything you see, you see the men wear, men and women wear. You see the apparatus on the streets. You see the squads out on transporting patients. It's all paid out of EMS non-reverting fund. Nothing paid out of the general fund. I wanted to also tell you guys, thank you for the second billing clerk. I think during that period, we were at about 550 to 600 runs behind as far as billing. Since then, we're down to 100, and we're holding at 100. So that tells you the significance of that is, when we get the billing filled out, the more money's coming in quicker. So we appreciate you guys approving that in January.
And the more money, the better equipped you are, better trained, and better emergency care can be provided to our citizens.
Absolutely, emergency care. And again, my priority, and I know our chief's priority, is our men and women of the department, and make sure they have the right equipment. And we continue to replace that equipment in a timely fashion, where we're not doing what I did in 1991, where we're using equipment that was 25, 30 years old.
Thank you. I yield.
Councilman Chell?
Chief Scott, or Chief Luther, whoever wants to answer this. I just want to reiterate a few things. So 51% of the folks that we bill are Medicare.
Correct.
80% of that, we bill Medicare. What happens to the rest?
So that 20% gap, that 20% gap, if, if they have secondary insurance, we will bill the secondary insurance. If they're on Medicaid, they can bill Medicaid for that 20%. Otherwise, it is written off.
So both the Medicare and the Medicaid folks are written off? If money, nothing comes out of their pocket?
Correct.
So that's 83% of the folks? Okay. 12% are private insurance?
Yes.
So in that case, I would tell you, they, they would have a deductible?
Yeah. We would bill the insurance, and then it's, like, if you have $100 copay or $100 deductible, then that is what they would, that's what the person would pay. But then we would still receive money from the insurance company as well.
Correct. So now we're up to 95% of folks are really not affected negatively. Obviously, the people of self-pay have to come up with self-pay, and we get that.
Yeah.
So again, I want to reiterate, if we do this, this is not a tax. This is a user fee. Majority of this is incumbent to the, the government to pay. Correct?
Correct, yes.
Right? And we're collecting 80% or 50% of whatever that number is we're making here. Right? So, so a private company that's charging $2,000 is getting 80% of $2,000. We're charging $1,200, we're getting 80% of $1,200.
Yeah. Medicare has what they call, what is accepted as a reasonable rate. Okay? And based off of the research that I have found, I can't find an unreasonable rate. So you are correct. If someone has a $2,000 bill, they would receive 80% off of that $2,000.
I made a couple calls to some private companies and found the same thing, Chief Luther. So what I'm getting at, I, I agree, if we're, if we're gonna keep it at 5%, fine. But we should at least listen to the mayor's recommendation of 18 months of relooking. I'm totally okay with going with a higher number also. But I, I would yield to the council and on what everyone wants to do, but.
We will give you a report in 18 weeks.
Eighteen months.
We will give you a report on everything as far as supply chain, supply rates, and, and percentages of increases or decreases. We'll give you that and let you make that determination. I've sat in the council seat before. I'll let you make informed decisions, and we'll go from there.
So let me add one more question, then I yield. What's the minimum a year that these, these prices are going up?
The minimum that we've found is 7%.
I yield.
Madam President.
Councilman Nation?
Thanks for all of these details, and thanks for the presentation that you gave us individually. I see this sheet that was passed out, and I see that you're projecting that in the first year, the approximate gross charges with the fee increase would be $7.1 million. And then in year five, that's, that goes up to $8.7 million. So that's a, an extra million and a half plus that you are likely to have. And that's if the low, if the current low collection rate stays the same. Am I right?
So the, the 7.1 that you're saying and the 8.7, that is what we will bill. So that is 100% of what we will bill. What we receive is on that second line. So that's where the Medicare, the Medicaid, self-pay and insurance comes into effect. So while we might bill the 7.1, because we are 83% Medicare and Medicaid population, we will then only receive the $3.6 million of that.
Got it. So in year one, you're billing three, you're receiving at a 51% collection rate, $3.6 million. And in year five, you're receiving with a 51% collection rate, $4.45. So it's, it's less than a million. It's about $800,000-ish.
Correct.
Okay. I think that that's, well, thank you for providing us with all these numbers. I think that really helps us make a decision. And I think that having more data in 18 months is a great idea. I appreciate your stewardship on all of this. And I hope to see at the 18-month mark that our collection rate has continued to go up and that we've, you know, you have even more funds to work with as a result of that. And Madam President, if there's no further discussion, I move for, I move that we take action on General Ordinance Number 3, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to take action on General Ordinance 3, 2024, made by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Azar. All of you in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do not take action.
Madam President?
Councilman Nation?
I move for approval of General Ordinance Number 3, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion to approve General Ordinance 3, 2024, made by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Azar. All of you in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? General Ordinance 3, 2024 is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chell?
Special Ordinance 14, 2024. Res zoning the property located 1118, 1134, and 1200 South 16th Street. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation. You must vote to take action.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of council. My name's Richard Shagley. I'm with the law firm of Wright, Schaglin, Lowery. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Walsch Building Contractors. As Michelle stated, Walsch Building Contractors is owners of 1118, 1134, and 1200 South 16th Street. These properties are currently zoned R2. We're asking tonight to be rezoned R1. As Michelle stated, the area plan gave a favorable recommendation. The area plan staff gave it a favorable. And, and the purpose of this is, these are going to be single-family homes. It's anticipated that they're probably gonna be a first-time homeowner. And as, as you may recall, over the last couple of years, I've probably been here about a half dozen times rezoning property because of a, a bank request. This is in kind of a preemptive, preemptive move. The petitioner is wanting to make sure that there's no hurdles for the potential buyer. And as a result, he wants to make sure that the zoning's proper. As a result, I'm here tonight asking for these properties to be zoned R1 for single-family homes. And in this area, there's, it's mainly all single-family homes, yet it's zoned R2 for some reason. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to comment on Special Ordinance 14? Close public comments and open council discussion. Councilwoman Thompson?
I was at the meeting where this was given a favorable recommendation. I believe there's only one resident, I recall, that appeared. And their main concern was, I think, water issues.
Yeah.
But that was something.
No, that was a different project.
Oh, that was a different project.
That was actually up in Terrytown, which you voted tonight to hopefully resolve that issue.
Yes. All right. So then, this one actually didn't have anyone from that area to speak. Yeah. So if there's no other questions or comment, I would move to take action. Take action on ordinance, Special Ordinance 14, 2024.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to take action on Special Ordinance 14, 2024, made by Councilwoman Thompson, seconded by Councilman Dinkel. All of you in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do not take action.
Madam President, I would move to approve Special Ordinance 14, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Special Ordinance 14, 2024, made by Councilwoman Thompson, seconded by Councilman Dinkel. All of you in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Special Ordinance 14, 2024 is approved. Chell?
Thank you.
Special Ordinance 15, 2024, authorizing payment in lieu of taxes for River Valley Apartments LLC.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of council. My name's Richard Shagley. I'm with law firm Wright, Schaglin, Lowery. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of New Direction, which is the developer of River Valley Apartments.
As a reminder, if no action is taken tonight, it will be heard at the first meeting in May.
I guess I should still ask for public comments.
Donald Hyde, 1411 Papa Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. I'm holding in my hand the note. I see no evidence of where this place is. Are they building it? It's already been built? What's the deal? Thank you.
That's, that's a pretty good question. This is at kind of the entrance to Union Hospital on, on 3rd Street, next to the hotel. That's currently under new management. That's where this project will take place.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Close public comments? Any council discussion?
Madam President?
Councilman Nation?
Richard, can you give us some more details on this proposal?
I'd be happy to give you whatever details you'd like. The, the basic here is, as you may recall, about a year and a half, two years ago, this entity was in front of you asking for a tax abatement for the construction of 40, uh, uh, apartments.
I remember. Did we give that a tax? Did we give that a tax abatement?
They received a tax abatement. This is a tax credit project, as you may recall. They did not get to first year, and they got it approved this year, and they're in the process of putting together their package to begin construction, and there's some issues, and as a result, they came asking for this pilot.
You know, Richard, usually you're so forthcoming with details about the projects that you represent. I wonder what's different tonight?
Councilperson Nation, I don't think there's anything different. I just think maybe tonight's not the night.
Would you like me to move to withdraw this, or is that something that you do?
No, I would just assume no action be taken. As Michelle stated, if no action's taken, this will be heard at the May second hearing.
So you call for the...
I would entertain a motion to take action.
Three times.
Second request, I would entertain a motion to take action on Special Ordinance 15. I will request one more time. Does anyone wish to take action on Special Ordinance 15? Hearing no requests to take action. Michelle, next on the agenda?
If I may, Madam President, due to the, my ability to be here this evening, I would like to think that I am now the new members of Terre Haute, which is very easy to do. I suggest you all do the same, it's a great organization, so.
Thank you, Mr. Shagley.
Thank you for giving me that opportunity to join in that organization.
Thank you, Mr. Shagley.
Thank you.
Resolution 10, 2024, transfer of $70,000 in Edit 04040096 budget.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Marcus Meyer, City Engineer. So this transfer that we're asking for is for a CIP plan, which is a capital improvement plan. An opportunity has arisen where we can partner with the county, and we can work on this together, which gives us the opportunity to not only plan the projects together and how formula funds would be divided in a fair way and most efficient way. We can save costs on public input and public hearing. We can do that in a group environment where we can get county and city residents together, because our transportation really is more of a regional, regional issue than it is solely city or solely county. You can't get to the city without driving through the county. And we want to make sure that it's efficient and as safe as possible. The benefits we could see from this plan, you know, it will give us an opportunity to study and plan future projects further than we can look within house staff. We can get data that allows us to apply for grants that easily and quickly, and it'll give us an opportunity to look at the infrastructure and improvements we need, whether it's a roadway or signal or a combination thereof, or pedestrian amenities. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment? Hearing none? Close public comment, open and council discussion?
Marcus, I think it's, I think it's great that you're looking for ways to cooperate with our partners in county government. Thank you very much for making that effort. I think that it's important that we do that at all levels of government, and in all ways across zoning and across pilots and across transportation. Thank you very much. I yield.
Anyone else? This time?
Madam President? If there's no further discussion, I move for, I move that we, sorry. I move for approval of Resolution Number 10.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 10, 2024, made by Councilwoman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Loudermilk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 10, 2024 is approved. Thank you, Marcus.
It's the only one on my, we didn't have to go to take action.
That's okay.
I know. I'm sorry, I fell asleep.
I also agree, Marcus, with Councilman Nation's comments. It's really refreshing to see us all working together on things that benefit all of us. Thank you for participating in that. Okay. Michelle?
You have one CF form in front of you. It was originally granted in 2016. They estimated that they would have 17 employees. They're stating they have 18 employees, and your vote, motion will need to be in substantial compliance or not in substantial compliance. If you find them not in substantial compliance, then a hearing will need to be held within 30 days.
And you're the petitioner, I guess, huh?
Uh, yeah.
All right, anyone from the public? I guess we don't have to have public comments on this, do we?
Yeah, and again, it was actually completed in January of 2018. They're stating it is La Quinta Inn and Suites. It was a brand-new building, they had no original employees. They have filed their form each year, very happy with that, right? Councilperson Loudermilk? And they did actually complete all of the boxes on the CF1 form, which again is unusual.
Do they have one year left?
It should be a 10-year...
It says it's a nine-year on page two.
Nine-year.
So one year.
And so it probably wasn't put into effect until 2019?
Yes, I almost said 2019.
Oh, really? Okay.
After it was completed. All right, any other council discussion? Madam President. Councilwoman Loudermilk?
There's no other discussion. I'd make a motion that group of hospitality is in substantial compliance.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to find, let's see, what is it? CF1 form?
Resolution 6, 2016.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that, Michelle.
Resolution 10?
Six.
Six. Okay, I lost my spot here, all right. Resolution 6, 2024 in substantial compliance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
2016. I'll make sure that's on the show.
Oh, I'm sorry, I want to correct that. Thank you, Councilman Nation. We will find CF1, Resolution 6, 2016 in substantial, substantial compliance.
Do you have anything, Michelle? Okay, I will make the most popular motion of all. I move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn on the floor, made by surprise, Councilman Azar. Seconded by Councilperson Dinkel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.